I'd like to call the Monday, September 14th, 2015 regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Our first item is normally a public comment period. I don't see anyone in the audience that would wish to speak, so I'm going to move off of that item and move right into item number two, which is Envision Eugene Comprehensive Plan. And we have lead staff Terry Harding with us today that'll give us an overview and introduction.
Thank you. Yes. So I thought what I'd do with you today is walk you through a little preview of what we'll be discussing with the City Council this evening at 5:30 at their work session on Envision Eugene, and then get to the content matter that you have attached to your packet, which is three working drafts of chapters of the comprehensive plan. So that's what we'll do. A quick reminder of where we are in the process of Envision Eugene. There's a graphic here that kind of describes the first phases of the project that began with the community visioning process, creating the seven pillars, and discussing best outcomes for topics in our city, ranging from economic opportunity to housing affordability and neighborhood livability. From that point, we moved into a stage of strategy refinement and looking at all our different types of land need with the Technical Resource Group and other groups around the city. And from there into a period of efficiency measures, if you recall that, we re-designated some land and adopted some code amendments in 2014. And from there, analyzed different potential areas for UGB expansion. So those phases of the project lead us to where we are today, which is poised to go into the formal UGB adoption process, having just received council direction on where to put the UGB for jobs, parks, schools, and homes. This map shows the council direction for the UGB expansion, and although it's a little hard to see on this map, the two expansion areas are out near the Eugene Airport for jobs, over 3,000 jobs in the Bethel neighborhood, a community park and a school site right between the airport and Highway 99, and a community park in Santa Clara off of Wilkes Drive. That's a 35-acre site. This list might look familiar. It's the required components of the UGB adoption package. And in order to actually adopt the UGB, we need to have these certain documents according to the state process outlined in statute. We refer to these required components collectively as the UGB adoption package. And they include Metro Plan amendments, which I'll walk through in a moment, new comprehensive plan policies, amendments to the Public Facilities and Services Plan, amendments to our land use code, zone changes, including the Clear Lake overlay in the expansion area, and then a whole series of technical documents and legal findings. This slide shows you the relationship of the Metro Plan to our new documents. We're working to pull certain policies out of the Metro Plan and migrate them to a new Eugene-specific comprehensive plan. Springfield's doing a similar amendment process to adopt their UGB, and when we're finished, we will be adopting this UGB into that new document, Eugene-specific comprehensive plan, along with required policies such as housing and economic development. Other policies, such as those related to planning for public facilities, will remain in the Metro Plan and in effect for Eugene until we come back to complete our Eugene comprehensive plan as part of a later amendment process that we've been calling Phase Two of the comprehensive plan. That's after we adopt the UGB.
That's the design.
Sorry?
It's a little irrelevant, but it's not the design, the UGB and comprehensive plan?
No, it's just an icon.
Okay.
Yeah, just an icon at this point. Help you visualize it as a document. This graphic shows the process for adopting the UGB adoption package. On this diagram, you can see the 2012 recommendation, the upper left-hand corner, and the council's recent 2015 direction on the UGB informing the creation of our regulatory documents. And in this column, you see the word regulatory at the top there. This is the path that's required for those documents to go through under state law. So both the Eugene and Lane County Planning Commissions have a role in recommending, first considering public comment and holding a public hearing on these documents, and then making a recommendation to their respective elected officials. And from there, the Eugene City Council and Lane County Board of Commissioners will take action. The non-regulatory path on the right-hand side shows the other documents that we've talked about as a body, the vision and action documents that provide critical context and a path to implement and realize the vision as a whole. But because these elements are non-regulatory, they're not required to go through that formal adoption process. And in addition, they're specific to Eugene, so we will not be involving or necessitating the participation of Lane County in the process for those components. Instead, each of these non-regulatory elements, building on work that we've been doing over the last couple of years with the community, will be reviewed by the public and endorsed by the Planning Commission, Eugene only, and Eugene City Council, separate from the UGB adoption package. Ultimately, at the bottom of the graphic, you can see all four components will come back together and be a unified plan, the Envision Eugene Plan. Any questions about that before I move on? Making sense? Okay.
I just, one question. Since this, the right column is non-regulatory, what, what level of weight or whatever, it's not regulatory, so what?
Right. So...
Is it?
What is it?
Yeah, is it actually needed for the Envision Eugene Plan?
It's not needed to adopt the Envision Eugene Plan, but we feel that the components are essential to tell the whole story. So the first component is the vision. It brings forward the pillars. The third one is the Urban Form Plan, which really lays out design guidance and is inspirational in nature, so it's a helpful, useful document for the community and development community alike. And then the last component's an action plan, which is more like a work plan. It carries forward strategies and actions the city will take to implement the vision, but isn't subject to the same rules as regulatory policy.
But don't we have certain amounts of the community vision and maybe even the urban form in the regulatory plan?
I think that will reveal itself as we talk more about the comprehensive plan. We certainly aspire for the comp plan to be right and to sort of reflect the values that are in the other components. So I think to the extent, to that extent, yes. Does that make sense? Okay. Comp Plan chapter, so for today, the Planning Commission has looked at several chapters of the comp plan, working drafts, and the ones we're focusing on today are highlighted in bold, the Compact Development in Urban Design, Housing and Administration and Implementation. The others here have been brought to you previously, Public Involvement, Economic Development. You had a presentation on the Transportation Chapter from Kurt Yider of Public Works. And the UGB itself is in a working stage, following the direction on the map that I showed you previously. Just to round out the list of the comp plan chapter, the next phase of updates will complete the Eugene Comprehensive Plan by developing chapters on Natural Resources, Community Health and Livability, Community Resilience, Public Facilities and Services, and then a parcel-specific land use map, which will update the land use diagram that's currently in the Metro Plan. Okay, so that's part of Phase Two.
One second. Commissioner.
Yes, I had another question in this regard. I noticed Goal Five says historic, but is that historic, you know, preservation of historic buildings? I mean, is that only covered in Goal Five? It's not covered in these other components?
So you're referring to the table in your packet?
Right.
That's the outline of the comprehensive plan. Historic Resources is specifically called out under statewide planning Goal Five, and so that's why it's in the right-hand column under Goal Five. But Historic Resources will probably pop up in several chapters of the comprehensive plan.
That's why I wanted to make sure we weren't excluding it to the Natural Environment Resources section.
Understood.
Right.
This timeline might look familiar. It's a graphic showing the phase from here to readying our planning documents for eventual adoption. And since it's hard to see and it's in your packet, I tried to summarize the phases of work on this next slide into four main phases. So right now, we're in the first one, working drafts, where we're bringing forward working versions of the UGB itself and comprehensive plan chapters, and hope to have all of those out in the public for discussion and on the website by the end of September. We're working towards the next phase, which is the preliminary draft of the UGB and comprehensive plan plus drafts of the vision and action plans. That'll be out for broad public review from October through December. Then the next major phase is developing a revised draft two, and this is the point where we will have a complete UGB adoption package. If you remember the list before with amendments to various plans and codes, that'll be a complete package that's sent up to DLCD in Salem and is kind of the record for our formal adoption process and for your hearing. That'll be out for Planning Commission process from January through April. And upon you making recommendations, we'll turn that into Draft Three of the complete UGB adoption package and revised documents for City Council and Board of Commissioners action from May through July. Now, the reason I put plus draft vision and action plans in a smaller type there is that they are not subject to the formal process, so I'm trying to be as clear as possible that although they come along, they're on a separate path and will not be going through Lane County process or formal adoption process. Questions about that?
Hi. Terry, do you mind sending that, I love that outline, to the Planning Commission?
Sure.
And if it's on the web, that's fine.
Sure, and I'll send you the whole presentation.
Okay.
Perfect, nice, yeah. Okay, the last slide here is just some upcoming key dates. There we are at the top today, talking about the comprehensive plan. This Thursday, we have a Boards and Commissions workshop on the comprehensive plan goals, and it'll be in this room and should be a great discussion from various perspectives across the city about the overlap and gaps in different areas of work that the city is undertaking. I'll come back to you next week and discuss the community vision component. We're also planning an open house on September 29th about the community design handbook. Back to you on October 12th to discuss the Urban Form Plan and Action Plan, so at that point, you will have seen all of the components that'll be going forward towards this October 20th publication date. And that's the next item here. So October 20th, we publish the preliminary draft, UGB and Comp Plan plus the Vision and Action Plans. Put that out for broad online outreach and events, all on the website for details. And then at the end of that initial public comment period, we come back to the Planning Commission. So we'll report to you on everything we've heard in a meeting in December. And that is it. I did not include the items that are attached to your packet because it's a lot of text, so that's not part of the presentation, but I welcome discussion and feedback about the three chapters that are attached to your packet.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sorry.
September 17th, what time is that meeting again?
Boards and Commission Workshop is 5 to 7. Yes.
In here?
Yes.
Thank you, Terry. We've all received the three components which have been mentioned by Terry, and what I'd like to do is to take each one separately and answer some questions on that rather than bouncing back and forth. So if we would go to our AIC Agenda Page Six, which is Attachment D, and I'll entertain any questions for Terry or whatever on compact design and compact development and urban design.
Mine isn't a question as much as it is a comment. In the second paragraph, I just really appreciate the second, I guess the last sentence, I think it's two sentences of that paragraph that say that this does not mean that neighborhoods should remain static, but that public and private investment should build on successful patterns to increase the beauty, vitality, and functionality of each neighborhood and the city as a whole. New development should contribute to a positive evolution of community character and a sense of place that is uniquely Eugene. And I just, I guess I really appreciate that perspective from the standpoint that as Eugene grows, that we can grow in a way that still respects the neighborhood character, but understanding that it's not going to just stay the same because it can't. And so I just, that just stood out to me, and I just appreciate that perspective.
Thank you.
I have Commissioner Mills in the queue.
Yeah, I guess mine's kind of a related topic. That's probably a little bit more of a note of concern in that the second sentence of the same paragraph, preservation of neighborhood character is a priority. And of course, what Commissioner Randall brought up is also key to the future. However, if I go down a little farther on this page into the final paragraph, "The City of Eugene plays a vital role in supporting excellent urban form as the community develops and evolves over time, for example, establishing the shape and size of urban growth, but engaging in area and neighborhood planning." And I guess I'm a little concerned when I see the term neighborhood planning here because the only place I see so far in the document where neighborhood planning is specifically identified is in the downtown neighborhood, related to the district and the very vital area that it is, of course. But other than that, we seem to be silent on neighborhood planning, and that's, I think that's a concern to me. I think being silent on it is perhaps the easy way to go, but I think it's troublesome. And so I'd like to know more about what the entire plan is for neighborhood groups and refinement plans going forward.
Sure. Well, I can give a brief response to that. The first thing I'd say is this is the chapter on kind of the form of the overall city, and so there is an emphasis on the strategy of corridors and centers and 20-minute neighborhoods. And there are policies on all of those things in this chapter. So 2.7 is the area planning chapter. It's not exclusive to areas that are downtown or along key corridors, but your points were taken, and I think there will be more detailed neighborhood planning attention and language in our livability chapter, which has yet to be written, of course. But certainly, if you hear comments.
Just a follow-up comment, Terry, because I know our refinement plans are old and, I'll say, out of date and extremely resource intense to try to update, but they have been provided quite important guidance to this group on several occasions in the last few years. And I think that also, as have the neighborhood groups, provided a lot of input. So that's why I bring it up, because I, my experience, my limited experience has been that the refinement plans do have weight and are important and do deserve to be updated, although, once again, I'm not seeing any mention of that here. Thank you.
I have another follow-up.
Okay.
Sorry. Well, I just wanted to mention, the upcoming River Road Santa Clara area plan encompasses both entire neighborhoods, so it's not a small area plan like we're doing for South of Lamont. There's a lot of flexibility in the scope of what we might do under these policies. The other thing is that we're working on finding the right place to encompass our intent to develop additional neighborhood plans and area plans. That'll probably show up in the action plan, as well as before you all for discussion about how we prioritize the next neighborhoods for planning attention. I'm not sure if it's scheduled yet, but I know you've talked about that recently.
Thank you, Terry.
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up. I appreciate Commissioner Mills' comments about neighborhood planning, because it is the only place really where it seems to be mentioned. I was going to follow up on an issue I had with Goal 13, Energy Conservation.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Baker, could you possibly speak into the mic?
Sure.
I just want to speak down here.
I was, I wanted to comment on Goal 13, Energy Conservation. I thought it should be added that we, in relation to that, it's also provide support for solar access for, you know, onsite generation of electricity. So, and I didn't see any mention of that in, under Energy Conservation or under this section, so I wanted to make sure that that was considered and added, because that's also a consideration in the design of these areas, is you want to maintain solar access for those building zones that, you know, support, that allow for that, or whatever you want to call it. Include that as a feature.
As a goal. Sure. Thank you.
What's the relevance to his question with 2X on energy efficient design? Does that seem to address some of that?
That's the latest policy. That's why it doesn't have a number.
Okay, on page 11?
Yes, let me find it. So as these drafts work their way through various city departments, they keep getting better and better. And so this is a recent addition of a policy that was suggested, I believe, from our sustainability staff. So I think it gets at part of what you're talking about, Steve, but...
Well, you probably, the only thing I would comment is you would probably want to add some words about onsite...
About solar.
Onsite generation, because that would be...
Sure.
Or solar access and onsite generation, just again, because make it clear that it's inclusive.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Well, I just, and I had one other comment, if I could continue, unless one of round robin, so...
No, go ahead. I hadn't seen any other hands at this point, Commissioner Baker.
Okay, so as long as we're back there on the page with the 2Xs, I had a comment or suggestion on 2.23, Design Transitions, because it seemed to me that traditionally what we do in land use planning is we try to use zoning to reduce the impacts between low and high intensity uses. And all this comments on is site design, and I think really, from a planning perspective, we try to gradate variations so we don't have, you know, the highest density next to lower density. So it would be useful to include, you know, the term, whatever you want to call it.
Zoning transition.
Transition, you know, zoning or whatever to, so it's not solely by building design that we're trying to mitigate these, but we're actually doing it by the layout of some of these areas in terms of allowable uses and so forth.
Yes.
Do I have any other commissioners that might have questions on Compact Development in Urban Design?
I have one.
Yes, Commissioner.
I have a couple, but I'll follow through. This is the only one I'll mention right now is on Policy 2.19. I'm just questioning, is abundant really the word we want to use? Enhance the public realm with abundant inviting public spaces. What is abundant? And it could potentially, as a regulating policy, create...
Objectivity.
Yeah. In a way that might not be what the intent is.
Okay.
Terry, would this be a good time to talk about the regulatory status of these?
Sure. As you might recall from a discussion in early August, we talked about what's a goal and what's a policy. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, that in a relationship to the current, because I'm sure Taylor was talking about clear and objective standards, and I, it might be helpful to distinguish between what's a policy and not necessarily. There's often a lot of sort of aspirational terminology in policies, and I think the intent here is that this is not clear and objective standards that are intended to be applied in a land use type of decision situation, so...
Yeah, and I'm aware of that. Really, the question's coming from, is it actually getting at the intent for the City of Eugene's policies to have their word abundant? It's just a word that, to me, yes, I understand there's some aspirational.
Yeah.
It's just that it's still going to be used as a policy that the community is going to be holding the city to. And it just was a word that I was like, huh.
What does that mean?
Yeah, what does that mean? And quite frankly, it's often a conversation, community-wide, of the disparity of where parks are, and so there's budgetary things to think about, et cetera, et cetera. So when you have abundant? Yeah, anyways.
It was more the comprehensive. Thank you.
I have Commissioner Mills and then Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to speak for a minute on Item 2.21, Parking Management. I have some concerns about some of the wording aspects of this item. Implement, which begins by implement parking strategies that use market forces. And I'm just going to offer the question, what about allowing market forces also in addition to using them? I mean, we have to, we have to allow certain developments to occur. I'm not suggesting that we don't use market forces to optimize parking, but I think we also have to be prepared to allow it. I also take some issue with the order of wording in the second sentence, utilize best practices to equitably reduce dependence on automobiles, generate revenues for local improvement, support local businesses, and calm traffic. I think that should be reordered. I'm just, I'm not, I think the first thing we're saying is reduce dependence on automobiles, and I'm not suggesting that's not viable, but it seems like there are other issues here that perhaps deserve more emphasis being mentioned earlier. Along with that, I'm not sure I like the term calm traffic. To me, it's too narrow of a description of what you're trying to achieve. You're trying to achieve safe traffic and safe transportation, and calming is one aspect of that. So you're narrowing the focus here too much, I believe, and I believe safety should be mentioned here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to follow up again on 2.19, Public Spaces, and I was going to suggest that it might be useful if you, you know, if this were elaborated slightly so it was clear to the public what these public spaces might include. Could be, you know, neighborhood, you know, neighborhood parks, community parks, public plazas. In other words, because someone reading this from the public might just construe that to be some plaza, which is not really, I think, what you're, what you're talking about here are all, the whole range of...
Whole system.
The whole system of public spaces. I don't know what they might be public, you know. But in other words, elaborate and just provide a little bit of a list so that someone reading this, because this, these are design principles that we're assuming the public could consume and understand.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Commissioner Mills?
This is just a question, relates to Item 2.24, where we're talking about crime prevention, and one of the terms utilized is abundant lighting, and...
There's that all abundant again.
You know, and abundant lighting can also be considered lighting pollution.
Right.
Light pollution. So I'm very, you know, I live in a New York neighborhood with no streetlights. Would we like some streetlights? Yeah, probably, but, you know, we don't want to end up looking like some of the areas around here where it's like daylight or yellow daylight at night. So I guess I would perhaps find a different word or a different phrase there to say what you're trying to achieve with light.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I just had one comment which ties maybe this one back up to public spaces.
Okay.
A few meetings I've been at with neighborhood groups talking about public spaces, the issues that's coming up now, parks and everything, is safety, and you might want to put safety in there, even though crime prevention might address it, but when you're doing this healthy and attractive and safe places for these parks.
Safe was once again a broader term than just crime prevention.
Yeah, well, yeah. I just have a comment.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to echo that as we're in a phase of working drafts, these comments are really helpful, and we get to gathering them from a lot of sources, and so if you think of additional things, feel free to email them, and we'll catalog them all for you.
Okay, seeing no further questions or discussion on that component, we'll then move on to Attachment D and entertain questions and discussion on housing. on to Attachment E and entertain questions and discussion on housing.
Great.
Any commissioners wanting to speak at this time? Commissioner Nicolau, and then Taylor, and then Mills.
So I kind of struggled if this question should be included, but I thought I should ask it anyways, considering the conversation our community is having right now over certain demographics of homeless people. Should this chapter engage homelessness program support or policies that support plans that are meant to assist in reducing homelessness, like Opportunity Village? I was unsure if that should be included in this, but perhaps something to think about.
I think it's a good question.
Okay.
As we go forward, we'll, we'll kind of try to get a pulse on where the community wants to land on that. As you, a lot of the policies do relate to housing security and safety and decency of public housing.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's a lot of overlap.
I noticed that there's a lot of policies that deal with affordable housing, which is wonderful. There's a lot of policies that deal with prevention and trying to mitigate that, but also to, you know, what, what happens when somebody already is homeless, and especially to, because, I mean, and I know that we're having a very vibrant community discussion on this right now, what to do with folks who are traveling through, what kind of services do we provide? And are they included in this chapter on housing?
That's a good question. I think most of the discussion is around more programmatic kind of actions the city can take, and how we want to address that as a community.
Absolutely.
But to the extent that it does influence our overarching land use policy.
Absolutely.
These policies mostly relate to or have some connection with land use and how we plan for future land uses in the community, so to the extent there's overlap there.
And it may even fit better into the livability chapter, but just something to consider, because I noticed our registered article on it, for example, had 500 comments from the community, so certainly a very important community topic, yes.
Yep.
I have Commissioner Taylor.
Yeah, I actually had a similar observation question as Commissioner Nicolau, and I also wanted to, just on a higher level, comment is, I think it's clear, and I appreciate the approach, and I know that's the intention in terms around introduction, goals, and then policies. So I think we're achieving, just reading through it, trying to read it, although I'm also on the subcommittee, trying to pull myself out and read it to see what it would be like to experience this as a first-time reader, to understand what the objectives are and how it's organized and formatted. So, thank you. I think it's going in the right direction.
Commissioner Mills and then Commissioner Baker?
This is probably too picky, but I'm going to go ahead and ask it, because it has to do with under quality and affordability. It says work across the community to maintain it and develop a decent, safe, healthy housing supply. And I'm wondering, what about safe and healthy in addition does decent convey?
Yeah, there has been conversation about whether that's the right word, again, the word choice.
I questioned that, too.
Yeah, and so that might not be right yet.
I love safe and healthy.
Great.
Okay.
Great. One of the questions was quality, just kind of, or, you know, life cycle of building materials, those kinds of things enter into having housing that's going to be sturdy enough to last a long time, I think is what we're trying to get at, but...
Okay.
Commissioner Baker?
Well, I had some, under 4X, the second item under housing affordability, I would suggest that be re-titled incentive density bonuses and exemptions. It'd be considered, like the other, the one below it, incentives for affordability. Because it seems to me that it doesn't make sense to just call out density bonuses. You may have height adjustments, you might have setback requirements or parking requirements. In other words, I would have it as incentives, and if you wanted to describe some of the adjustments that could be made, you know, they could be density, they could be height, they could parking requirements. And also to me, the reason I say incentives is you have waivers and so forth, you might have, you know, waivers for system development charges, as an example. That would be an incentive, it's not a bonus, density bonus. So just, you could make that more comprehensive in a way, in its destruction, in its description, and it would be less narrowly focused. And that, that seems like it might make sense from a, giving you both flexibility and also outlining the array of incentives that might be provided.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Do I have any other commissioners? I had one on this, just as the follow-up, on density bonuses and exceptions. For such things to occur, what process would they go through? In other words, would there be public involvement? Because a change in some of these things, if they just go through an adjustment review, might not get as much of a involvement when they're occurring, and...
Right. No, to, to develop a new density bonus mechanism or other kind of waiver program would involve amending the land use code. So that's a full code amendment process.
Okay.
Public involvement, council decision, yeah.
All right. Any other questions on this section? Seeing none, then, we'll move on to administration and implementation. Any commissioners? Commissioner Randall?
Sure, I'll jump in. And this kind of relates to my thoughts on housing affordability, which I know was the last section, but I, I thought it probably, my comments better fit in this section, so I held, held back. I think the key for me, and I've got some concerns as we move forward, that by not expanding the UGB for housing, that it's going to put pressure on housing affordability. And so I think the key for me is the urban reserves and the monitoring program. I think those are two key elements that we've got to stay on top of and be quick on our feet with, because I, I'm of the opinion, and I know it's my opinion, that our community's going to grow maybe faster than what all the statistics are predicting. And I think if that happens, and if I'm right, then I think we've got to have that mechanism for urban reserves and the monitoring in place and active and able to move quickly on that. Or it will put enough pressure on the community that housing affordability will pretty much go out the window. And so those, those are my concerns. I think if we truly stay on that, I think that's good. And if I'm wrong, I can be wrong, but that's my gut feeling.
Sure. Yeah, we've heard a lot of interest in the monitoring program, obviously, and so I wanted to explain a little bit more about where the various components will live. So there are policies in this chapter.
Okay.
A whole section of policies. The third section of policies is about the growth monitoring commitment and policy, setting the city's policy direction. There will also be, the details of the monitoring program will live in the action plan. And so you haven't seen that component yet, but you have discussed the monitoring program in detail at past meetings. And then I just wanted to also point you to the policy on urban reserves, which is in Chapter 2, the Compact Development Chapter.
I have Commissioner Mills.
Yes, I guess I wanted to make a point of providing support for what Commissioner Randall just mentioned. I think it's important, you know, that it's not just his opinion, and I support that, and I also have a concern, first off, for the great need of an effective monitoring program and the ability to update the plan as a way of ensuring affordability going to the future. And I'm not sure where that all goes here, but, but I think that that's a key item. It's been a concern, affordability's been a concern for me since we began envision Eugene, continues to be, and I think the monitoring program can help give us some insurance there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have any other commissioners with any questions on this section? Commissioner Nicolau?
Just actually, a really quick grammatical error under livability indicators, after technical advisory committee, you do have a double comma.
I see it.
Thank you.
Was there supposed to be something there, or was it just done? No, it's just a track changes error, yeah.
All right, well, glad the livability indicators are in there, though. That's fantastic.
Yes, we're really looking forward to flushing that out.
Any other discussion? Hard to believe we're moving this, Commissioner Taylor?
I'm not sure if this is the right time. I, I know you've thought about this, is because the action plan is not a part of the regulatory adoption process, is there anything within the comp plan that addresses, or do you think it's a need, to address the move, the acknowledgement of the action plan and movement? So we've got policies, and if the action plan is separate, and I do think that's the right way to go in terms of what those actions are, and have it be a dynamic document that allows for it to stay current contextually, there's an accountability piece that just raises my awareness of just, okay, you've got these policies, and yes, they're, if we're spending the time to have action, does the comp plan want to have some kind of connection to that action plan in a more generic policy? Anyways, so...
Right, we're trying to find the right balance between setting city policy that'll hold us for as long as it needs to.
Right.
A UGB that will accommodate our documented 20-year land need, and then, as you said, be as flexible as we can with what we learn as we monitor the outcomes and the assumptions, our growth assumptions. What we have committed to the council and been directed by them to do is shorten the interval of reporting for monitoring, and that will be carried through in the actions in the action plan. So within the first three years of UGB adoption, we'll be reporting on how we're doing. And then they'll, at that point, have the option to take action to revise either the UGB or, or policy that's not working the way we want it to work.
Is there anything you'd add to that, Emily?
Well, I do think that, I haven't...
Can you come up?
Sorry, yeah. So staff generally tries to get your input and others' input before it goes through, through me, and so I haven't had my final fingerprints on this stuff yet. I do think, though, that we got really clear direction from the council about sort of this suite of actions that we should be taking. The action plan, or the action program, is going to include a lot more than those really important elements that the council included in its direction to us. I think we want to have some policy direction in the comp plan on, on those things that the council included in its direction. Not sure that it's quite there yet.
Okay.
So I think that's an astute note on your part, and it'll be something that I'll make sure that we get in, in my probably final review. And this is the place, I think, in monitoring. For example, probably, Commissioner Mills, I think you put it very, very well with that idea that we're going to establish this baseline urban growth boundary. We've, we have the three-year check-in noted here, but the reason it's a baseline is that we fully intend to take a really good critical look and take potential action in three years again. So I mean, kind of to set it up a little bit more like that, because I think that's what was presented to council, and I think that that's what they directed.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I have one comment on this, on the growth monitoring, and again, it's, what I'm doing really is sort of representing Historic Review Board, because I'm the representative to that group. And right now, it's sort of like we're not doing any tracking of that. It appears related to our growth monitoring program, and it might be valuable to, to think about how you could add some wording in here that you would, you know, track the retention of important, you know, significant historic resources in the community, just so that, you know, that, again, I don't know exactly how it fits in here, but I think that might be worth consideration, and it would, you know, demonstrate a commitment to trying to preserve historic resources. You'd at least know when you were losing them and when you weren't, or when you were preserving them, you know, in perpetuity.
Thank you. I agree, and I think there is room to include that. It might fit under livability indicators, it might fit in our action plan, there may be several places, and I do want, look forward to hearing from two members of the Historic Review Board that are coming to the workshop on Thursday. So, yeah.
Do we have any other questions?
I...
Commissioner Nicolau?
I have a hard one, I know.
Nicolau.
Try and fit that on a Scantron. So, just a quick question here. I know that monitoring a lot of this is about monitoring growth, but I wanted to ask if we planned on monitoring two things. The first one is land values. I would be especially interested in looking at land values in proximity to TOD corridors. I know that that's actually how TriMet plans out their corridors, is they actually look at land impacts and values to see if there would be a worthwhile investment, and that might be some really helpful information for us to have, especially as we have Moving Ahead project. And my second question is, I see that we are monitoring economic development trends, as such as employment growth rate. Are you, how are we, how else do we plan on tracking economic development, just while we're here?
Sure, well, we have data that we get from the state on wages. Two of our main goals under economic development are wages and unemployment figures, and so those are two of the key ones I can think of off the top of my head that we'll be paying really close attention to, because they are so important as indicators to our overall economic prosperity. But there is a pretty detailed list of data that we intend to gather for the monitoring. That's part of the monitoring program that you heard about in June.
Mm-hmm.
So right before you joined that commission.
Right.
I know, I'm a copycat fan. So I'd have to consult that list to pull out other items. It's pretty lengthy.
I'm curious, and perhaps I do need to watch that webcast, and I apologize, I know I'm continually catching up on what I missed. I am curious if those trends will be tied to nodal development or to 20-minute neighborhoods?
Mm-hmm.
Because that would be really an interesting way to track the success of those neighborhoods, is if they actually are retaining those key services and development amenities that we hope for those nodes to have. And then also, I know that those will be separate from larger employment centers, so this is happening out on Clear Lake, but just to kind of be able to see those nuances represented in data would be very interesting.
I agree, yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, just following up also, the LTD gets tax payments from people that are self-employed in Eugene as well?
Yes.
And so that might, you know, if it's not on the list, that might form another mechanism to track. You wouldn't get disaggregated data, but you could get aggregated data for the city proper or whatever, that would show you year to year, and they could probably break it out between wages and self-employment, so you would see, you know, if there were changes over time. Because obviously, a lot of even Comcast employees, or not employees, they're contractors, so they don't get wages as such. So there are lots of people that are essentially self-employed, but they, they have to pay self-employment tax to the state and income tax to the state, I mean, self-employment tax and income tax to the state, and then they also pay a portion of their taxes also to LTD as part of the requirement.
Right, so there are multiple sources that we can tap for...
Right.
To round out the picture.
Yeah.
Good suggestion.
Do I have anyone else who wishes to comment or ask a question? Seeing no one, thank you, Terry.
You're welcome.
This has been a tremendous presentation. We moved through quite quickly, so we'll have a lot of time to talk about some of our other items. Moving to item number three, do we have any items from staff to discuss?
Yeah, a couple items. First of all, I wanted to just step through, we have not, I don't believe, has anyone received a poll?
We have not, I don't believe, has anyone received a poll for the retreat? Don't believe so. Okay. So, that is still pending, needs to be done, and will be forthcoming soon. There's a hearings official meeting scheduled. Some of you may now watch the hearings official schedule occasionally, but on September 23rd, there's the Ross-Murray Zone Change scheduled. October 14th, Verizon Wireless and CICudua are both on the docket, just FYI. And just so you know, we're sort of tracking all the scheduling of that concurrently with what's going on with Planning Commission, and I think I just make it a habit to try to pass that along to you as it comes up in the items for commission, if that's helpful. So, let's see, the next, well, we have several more envision Eugene meetings coming up. As Terry mentioned, we'll be presenting some similar information to the City Council later on today, so this is our first meeting after coming back from break. And what we're hoping to do is just, in fact, this is going to be the first topic on our first meeting, coming back from break, so kind of give them just an overview of what's going to be coming to them, because it'll actually be a while before we get back to council and the county commission. But we really want to make sure that they're at least aware of all the work that you all are going to be doing between now and then, and also a lot of the public outreach and other good stuff that's going to be happening. So, they'll hopefully be on the same page with that. So, next week, on the 21st, we'll have the vision conversation. Following that, on the 28th, the Oakley remand is scheduled to come back, and that, of course, is coming up against that deadline for when we need to have that done. So, be thinking about that. Currently, there's nobody scheduled to be out on that day. Let's see. October 12th is another envision Eugene item, the Community Design Handbook. And then we get further on into October, with the 19th being the first draft of envision Eugene, and we'll just leave it at that. So, that'll carry us through a good bit of work. I wanted to point out a couple of items for, that are coming up with City Council. You had asked that we flag things for you that you are interested in or had been working on as they come to council. First one, of course, I've mentioned, which is later on this evening at 5:30, the envision Eugene work session. The next item would be on September 21st, there would be a public hearing on the Resthaven, ordinance on Resthaven Memorial Park Metropolitan Amendment and Zone Change. So, there'll be hearing from the community at that point. On September 28th, there will be a joint meeting with the LTD board to talk about the update on the Moving Ahead project. So, that project is.
Moving ahead.
Thank you. There's going to be a lot of that. So, that'll be exciting, and I think we can tell you more about that as the time gets closer, but essentially, they'll be selecting the corridors that they want to look at further, and it's a good first step. October 12th, we had formally scheduled the South Wilmette Special Areas Zone Work Session with council. Now, this is going to be a work session, so we'll just update them on all the hard work that you all have done, and also a lot of folks in the community have done on that. I know they're hearing from a lot of constituents. We have a couple of other activities happening. I believe this week is at Wednesday night, there's kind of a multi-neighborhood meeting that's happening with a panel of different folks with different perspectives on the issue. Staff will be there to support that, but it's being organized by the neighborhoods. Your very own Commissioner Randall will also be on the City Club this Friday. So, thank you very much for doing that. That'll be exciting, and I think really, really helpful. There's a lot of information that's flying around out there that is really not very accurate, unfortunately. So, we've been working really hard to try to get good information out there, but it is, it is a challenge, and I think that'll be a big help. So, thank you. Anyway, that South Wilmette council update was scheduled to be on October 14th previously. It is now October 12th, so it'll be the Monday work session on October 12th. And it will be filed on October 19th by a public hearing, and then we have the action scheduled for council on that item on November 9th. And I also wanted to point out, on October 14th, we actually traded items, but workforce housing is a topic that the City Council has been interested in hearing from staff about, and it's coming up a lot. The question of housing affordability in general comes up a lot, and I think that this topic of workforce housing would be a really good opportunity to unpack that a little bit. Lot of different perspectives on housing affordability in general, and workforce housing is sort of a, sort of a missing piece. You know, we have programs that deal with truly affordable housing, so sort of in the low-income spectrum of the community, that there are a lot of state tax programs and what have you that can pull together that program that we've been running as a city for many, many years. Workforce housing in a higher-income level is a little different, and looking at the affordability of that, I think will give us also a lot of insight into the affordability of market-rate housing through redevelopment and other activities. Council has asked for a work session on that. Actually, I'm going to have to correct myself, that was scheduled on October 14th. We just decided this morning that that needs to be rescheduled, but my guess is it will be happening in October. And I just wanted to point it out to you since you brought up the affordability question. So, we should be hearing more about that, and we'll share whatever we learn with you
Commissioner Baker.
Just one follow-up. I think there's, my calendar's in my pack, but I believe there's a workshop on Moving Ahead to, is it this evening?
Yeah, so today from 4:00 to 6:00 in the library. There's an open house.
4:00 to 6:00 in the library, yeah.
On Moving Ahead, and the project team will be just sharing information, the same information that's online, about which corridors should advance into Level 2 for further study.
And I just wanted to report back on the Historic Review Board, which met last, maybe it's a week now, met recently. They only meet quarterly, so they don't meet very often. They did discuss putting on an event in May to sort of parallel with an event in Portland where they, where they do a historic sort of awareness weekend, and they do tours and workshops and things for kids and so forth, where they, they've sort of been coordinating with Portland, so that Portland would do it on Saturday, and we would do it like on Sunday. I can't remember, I think that's the strategy that's being considered now. That's, of course, tentative. The Historic Review Board, the staff and the Planning Department doesn't, it's different, they sort of depend on grants to get part of the funding, and then the city matches, so there's some proposals to write some grants. We automatically sort of qualify for grant from the state on an annual basis from the State Historic Preservation Office, you know, small grants that then we, if the city matches the funds, we can do something related to it. So, there's a bunch of ideas for various projects, including some incentives for owners of historic buildings to do small repairs. So, Portland, or some jurisdictions in Oregon have a very successful program where they provide small grants of like $1,000 or $2,000 to do repairs to historic structures. So, they're looking at that as long, as well as some other measures to look at for incentivizing historic structures. I should point out that part of this is in response to, in terms of the state survey, Lane County is about, is last, is sort of dead last in the preservation of historic structures compared to other counties and cities and jurisdictions. So, if you look at the analysis done by groups that used to be actually be based in Eugene but then moved to Portland, unfortunately, we're at sort of the bottom of the rung. So, any kind of improvements that we would do would be helpful, getting us to move forward in a more positive way in regards to preserving historic structures of historic significance. So, I just wanted to add those notes, people, because they don't actually web-record, they do little tape recordings, and then you have to request it, and then you, I guess, you get it on a CD or something, or from the, it's not put online, so it's unlikely that other people would listen to the meeting unless they were very, very, very committed. So.
Are there any other items from commissioners? I had one that Amy brought up that she would like us to talk about. Apparently, the people that are doing the filming of us would like to have us move because apparent, they can't get votes, and they would like to see the votes when taken. And they were suggesting that we somehow sit around the end of that table there, but the issue being is that some of the commissioners would have their back to the audience, and so I said I'd rather have this discussed before we do anything like that. What are your feelings on this as commissioners?
I'll jump in since I was part of, when we moved it this way. It is difficult to see down the line. I know when I was chair, difficult to see down the line when we're all in a line like this. And so I think there's pluses and minuses to both, and maybe we just go back to around the end again and see how it works. I mean, nothing's actually in stone, so we'll try it.
We have more hands up here. Okay, Nicoletto, Taylor, and then Baker.
I just want to make a recommendation that, do we just want to try it one way one week and then try the next week another way, and just ask them what their preferences and see how we feel? That was an open question, don't all rush at once.
Commissioner Taylor.
Well, we do have people that are in the public, that are frequently in the public. So, I guess I would love to find out what, if you have a thought in terms of, because Terry can obviously turn, and it's next to a wall, if you have any thoughts.
I'd like to see the faces, body language, and things like that are very important to me. All right, put a chair right there and see, so it doesn't matter.
Anybody else?
Baker, Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I wanted to comment that what we used to do was we would sort of be really on two sides rather than on three, so your back wasn't to the visitors. And very often, the staff would be there because they would be going up to the screen and pointing at something. In other words, not depending on the mouse, but they could actually go and point to it, and they were close to the screen. So, there was certain advantage to that from a, from a presentation perspective in that they were close to, you know, what they were trying to, you know, if the, if the technology didn't work as we always like it to, which is, sometimes happens. So, that would be another approach, would be not to be on three sides, but to be on two sides, and then maybe the staff could be at that end, and then the camera would still, that way, people who come, who make an effort to come to the meeting could actually pretty much see everyone's faces. There wouldn't be any backs.
I'm inviting myself to Terry.
Are there legal issues involved?
No, there's no legal issue, but it's pretty common when there is no camera for the chair to record votes by saying, you know, okay, the vote's been taken, the vote carries with Commissioners Mills and Jaworski voting against or voting in opposition. And so you could actually remark in your summary of what happened on the vote. If you prefer to be set up like that, that would also allow the viewers to audibly know how the vote went down.
That's a question that I was going to ask, because I figured, besides the two having their back to it, the other was that the video people had said that they could record a vote that way, and I was going to ask you what you just responded, it's not necessarily have to be on the videotape, the show of hands.
No, and it's actually, it's kind of nice when you say it because it's actually potentially more accessible to people to know what happened. It's not legally necessary, but.
Okay. Commissioner Mills.
I just, I just remarked that, you know, most of the years that I've been here, the chair or vice chair have sat down at the end, and I think it is a little easier for the chair to see what's going on with the other members, for example, speaking and so on. You've got, they're more in your line of sight, you can see them. And so, I kind of like the idea of, I don't like sitting with my back to the public even though I can turn, but doing an L-shaped thing where the chair, vice chair would have a full sweep of all the members, and would be one I'd suggest trying.
Robin would lose his full sweep.
Yeah, I guess I'd be moving Robin here.
We could easily sit down at that end. We're totally flexible. I think that's a great idea to have the chair and co-chair sitting down here. It is much easier to see.
All right, so how do we feel about that, the chair, vice chair, and then five of us here? Five other commissioners here?
Six.
Okay, well, chair and vice chair and the other five.
Yeah.
What do you mean by six?
I don't know. Jaworski's not here today.
It'd still be five.
There'd be only seven of us anyway.
Five, I mean, two.
Okay. Sounds good. We'll try that next week.
Then you don't have to have a special chair.
Yeah. Okay. Any other items from commissioners? Robin has brought us up several, yes, Commissioner Baker.
The only thing I was going to ask is if staff could send out the current schedule, it sounds like that there may have been some changes to that.
I think it went out this morning.
I think Amy sent it out this morning.
Okay, I haven't checked my mail because I've been in meetings this morning.
I just got it, I haven't looked at it, but I think she sent it out this morning.
Okay. Okay, well, if there's nothing else from commissioners, I know Robin had mentioned this, that if we want to have a little time to talk, or if we're not, maybe we'll think about it for another meeting, but, you know, the learning or how are we doing process, is there any kind of comments on that? Have anybody thought about that, or is it less, at least let's leave a message the next meeting or two, when maybe we'll think about that and have something to discuss at this item if we don't now? So, I don't see anyone who has anything to talk about how are we doing.
Okay, well, almost an hour early, I think that's pretty good.
Yeah, we're finished rather early, yeah.
I think, can I, sorry, right at the end. I think it could be interesting how we are doing for certain meetings, maybe be more specific, just in terms of respecting time, to be able to maybe have the public be able to add something, you know, how are we doing, especially if there's some time at the end, you know, how are we doing on a specific topic to get some immediate response, but it's just a suggestion.
Commissioner Baker.
Well, this isn't directly related to that, but we had a discussion a while back, which we sort of tabled at the time, whether we would accept, in other words, when we're not in quasi-judicial mode, we could accept comments the way the City Council does at the meeting. And I don't know that we ever resolved that issue, so, you know, if, you know, if we have some time now and you wanted to discuss it, it would be an opportunity. But, you know, we haven't thought about it. I just was throwing it out that that's an issue that, you know, we didn't fully resolve, and it will come up again, and so rather than wait till it comes up again and then we, you know, we have a full agenda and we have to deal with it, it might be useful to at least try to discuss it in one of these meetings that isn't likely to take us long, so we have a little more time to discuss it and make a decision in advance. So, we, you know.
Commissioner Mills.
Just to clarify, Commissioner Baker, you're talking about allowing comments related to what the hearing, what the meeting topic is, when it's legislative and not quasi-judicial. We've tended to restrict both, I think, and we're considering not restricting the legislative items so that public could comment on them the day we're talking about them. Is that right?
Right. And I think over time, if I, if I go back in time.
We didn't used to.
We didn't used to restrict that, and it's sort of a recent, a more recent.
We didn't used to restrict that, and it's sort of a recent, a more recent decision that happened, so, again, it just seems to me that it'll come up again, right?
Okay, correct me, as I understand that, then we have two things, so, one, under how are we doing, we might want to entertain comments from the general public on what they think or saying such things, and in addition, I'm also hearing that the public comment in the front is an opportunity for people to speak for three minutes, but we're also saying, if time permits, and we have a non- quasi-judicial function, that as we'd like talked about housing or something, once they hear a discussion, that before we moved on, maybe would say, is there anyone in the audience after hearing what we said have something? No, you're not suggesting that. What are you suggesting?
It's the green slips, when, you know, sometimes, or we can think back recently, when we had, where we had, you know, ten, five or six people that had submitted green slips that wanted to speak about something that we were going to discuss that meeting.
Yes.
But because we had a public hearing on it, but it was legislative, it wasn't required by law that we, you know, prevent them from testifying, we opted at the time to exclude them from
Commenting?
Commenting, yes.
I don't remember that, on something that was not quasi-judicial.
We had a
Well, it was, I think it was legislative, but I think, correct me if I'm wrong, when the public hearing is closed, the record's closed too, I think.
Well, we have a public hearing differently than, you know, a public hearing, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that maybe, when this question came up previously, I had followed up with Ann Davies about that, to ask about, well, what are the parameters of the public record, whether it should be open or closed, and it's obviously very clear for a quasi-judicial process, that when the record is closed, it is closed, and you have to be very careful about that. For legislative process, that it is not as cut and dried, however, leaving the record open, what it does is for either proponents or opponents of a particular outcome, where people who have feelings one way or the other, what you do is create a lot of uncertainty as to when comments should be made, and who might be getting the last word on the comments when, and so basically, it helps people understand
Public hearings involved.
Especially if a public hearing is involved, it helps people understand when they should be making their comments, and so, it's something that maybe we could discuss as a retreat topic, might throw that out there.
Well, it's pretty, I think it's clear that if there's a public hearing held on a subject, and we're continuing something on it, that's different than, let's just say, the briefing we had now, there is no public hearing.
Right.
Okay, so, on a briefing like we just had now, where there is no public hearing, am I hearing that we could stop at a session and say, is there any comments from the public on what, no, you're saying no, Baker?
I think if I may clarify and make sure that I'm interpreting this correctly, so, there's two separate things on the table, there's Commissioner
I understand.
Okay, and then with Commissioner Baker's, if I am understanding correctly, because it is a legislative process, it would be okay for people to speak on the topic that we are deliberating on, because it's a legislative process, and there's no, there's really not as many legal restrictions around what that public record has, how the public record has to be maintained, am I understanding your
Right.
During the public comment.
It would be in the beginning period, and
The green slips.
So, for example, during South Lamont, we did not let certain, we didn't let certain people speak, because they were wanting to speak on South Lamont, but you are saying, in this instance, we should consider allowing them to do so.
And let me
And, obviously, not just
Right, and let me elaborate, the reason is not, not, I mean, they might have something very, you know, crucial to add, but, but the point is, they've made an effort to come here, and they've maybe written down notes, that, you know, they may have sat the night before and written down notes, and for us to turn them away, I really think is not a very good way of promoting public participation, it turns people off, so they do it, they come once, and then they realize that, you know, the situation, you know, for whatever reason, they realize that the system is stacked against them, and there's no way for them to comment, and maybe they missed the public hearing, or whatever, or out of town, or whatever, or didn't realize the importance of that particular event, we're not voting on approving these things, we're just voting on recommending them to the city council, city council is the one that approves them, but we have a stake in trying to encourage this public to participate, from my point of view.
Commissioner Randall?
Well, I'll give a different view on it, I think, you know, if you have a public hearing, you can submit written or show up, and when it's legislative, it goes to council, they have another public hearing, and you could submit written and show up, and I think if we open up our comment period at whatever point in all of that discussion, I think it just muddies the waters, and I think it just makes it clear then when you can put in comments, and, you know, what the process is, still has plenty of opportunity for public involvement, so I guess I just disagree with that aspect of it.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, from my point of view, in the past, we used to not call those public hearings, because they were not quasi-judicial, we called them public workshops or whatever, we invited people to come to testify, in other, well, I don't recall having, I mean, I'd have to go back through my records, but I just don't recall that we didn't, we didn't, we didn't close the record, because we allowed people to submit comments, you know, even on the day that we might be voting on it.
Commissioner Taylor, and then I'll just have something, go ahead, Commissioner.
So, first I wanted to ask either staff or Emily, historically, for legislative process, has it been called a hearing in front of planning commission, I just want clarification?
So, yeah, I mean, let's take the Envision Eugene process, for example, a very big legislative matter, yes, they're always called hearings, the city council's charter, for example, requires it to have hearings, some jurisdictions don't, the county calls them readings sometimes, but they, for the most part, when the public comes and testifies on a particular item, whether it's quasi-judicial, legislative, you call it a hearing, but you do, I think, you know, as Robin told you what his discussion with Ann was, it's true, I think you guys have an understanding, the legislative process, from a legal standpoint, does not require you to have these moments when you close the record and reopen the record, it is a matter of what your bylaws say, how you run things, your bylaws, you know, a lot of cities' planning commission bylaws do address what can be brought up at a public forum, and sometimes says nothing that we're addressing that day, whereas a judicial legislative, I don't know that your bylaws address the issue, but you would check there, and also, it really is more a matter of how the process is carried forward, and an issue of fairness, it's not a legal problem if somebody comes to your public forum after you've already had the hearing, and provides you with two minutes more comment on that, however, you have a hearing, so that everybody can go and hear what each other's saying, and look at the record, and, so if you do allow comment to keep trickling in, it's harder for people to participate, so that's a consideration. All of these issues are a very good topic for your upcoming retreat, and you can alert Ann ahead of time that this is an issue, and she can talk to you about these things.
I'm, sorry, I have a follow-up with that, it's, thank you. So, I actually, I have a different opinion too than Commissioner Baker, is I actually agree with Emily, is that there's a level, it's in line with what you're trying to achieve and your intent, Commissioner Baker, and that is us being accountable, I mean, if we leave it open, and we have a timeline to give some kind of recommendation to council, and we keep allowing information that we're going to be reviewing and including in that, that's a lot of, I mean, we're all volunteers, and can we all do it, and do we have all that information to the very last moment, so I think the clarity of the timeline, and providing a public forum for everyone to hear that, and know that, I really like clear communication around shifting and saying, great, you've come today, the hearing was last week, we are deliberating, you're welcome to come and speak, know that we will not include it in our recommendation, you are going to be televised, and your information, we encourage you to then submit it for the city council hearing. So, I think clear communication will achieve that, but I do think if we leave it open, there's tremendous challenge for accountability and fairness.
Commissioner Nicolao?
I agree, that being said, I really think that we should table this conversation for the retreat, I think that we all kind of have a lot of thinking that we need to do about it, and personally, too, I think that, yes, the, the two weeks that, however, no, however many weeks we give for written testimony and for the public hearing, I believe that's more than enough, but that's also based on the assumption that the public process beforehand was satisfactory, was transparent, and that everyone felt that they had the opportunity to get involved, from even going back as far as the conceptualization page, and I, the conceptualization stage, and I know that staff works tremendously hard to do public outreach, I've seen the list of all the outreach they do, it's incredible, it's breathtaking, but, you know, maybe there are some conversations we can have, so we're not just taking remedial action at the end, we're actually taking preventative measures to make sure that, you know, we don't have to keep extending, extending, because at one point, we do have to shut the public record, and we do have to make a decision based on what evidence has been given to us, even if it is a legislative process and not quasi-judicial, we still have an obligation to do so, and it's fair to people, they know when to get involved, and so, I'm certain this is going to be a very engaging topic at the retreat, and I would just like to encourage us to discuss it then.
Commissioner Nicolao, would I take what you said, is I'd like to table this, was that a motion?
No, that was a very strong suggestion.
Okay, I agree.
I don't think we need to make a motion, though, about it.
Okay, I don't know if I can to the public
You're
Okay, so, I would suggest that definitely, as indicated, this is definitely an item to add to the retreat, to talk about and clarify, and with that, maybe they could also clarify when I read in public comment, except for items scheduled for public hearings, exactly what that means, because like, we just had a presentation where we went out, you were in the future, and talked about what might be scheduled for public hearings, so does that mean no one could ever speak about it? I'd like to have a legal opinion on what that means by scheduled, or scheduled within the next month, or something, so that we know what they can talk about in that first three minutes. Is that okay, is it all right with everyone if we move this to the retreat? I see a general consensus, I'd like to go back to one other thing to finalize, Commissioner Taylor had said that let the public comment on how are we doing, how do you feel about that, since?
I think it encourages transparency, so I don't see any problem if we
Any objections? Okay, having just seen what we went through, anyone in the audience would say, how are we doing?
He's spent a lot of time to formulate those minutes, as I brought it up.
Well, being a frequent flyer here, I appreciate the opportunity, and first of all, I want to thank all of you for your commitment to our community. This is Ed McMahon, Home Builders Association of Land County. One thing I notice when I come to meetings is I really don't have anything to say at the beginning, but then I hear the staff presentation, and I'd love to say something at the end, if time allows, I just feel like I'm missing a lot of opportunities to agree with staff, and I'm not getting them, so, when time allows, I think it'd be great to see if there could be some three-minute comments after the staff report, that's it, keep up the good work.
That's great, thank you.
Thanks, Ed. That was similar to something I was trying
I think that's what you were trying to say, that didn't go anywhere, but, okay.
Anything else at this time?
I would like to, at our retreat, entertain your idea, and McMahon's idea.
It's a three-day retreat.
Yeah.
Three-day retreat, sounds great.
I think it's really, I'm not sure that needs to be in a retreat, but I do think if there's time, it makes a lot of sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, then, so we'll try to implement that under how are we doing, if there's, definitely, and we'll discuss another opportunity to comment after people in the audience at the retreat have heard staff comments, which may not have been in the, anything put out and whatever.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Anything else at this time? We're still early.
Thank you.
Okay, well, then I'll adjourn the meeting, then, so adjourned.
Thank you. John.